Like just call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board. It's Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. It's 7:06. And I just want to read off in the anticipation of the extension of an executive order 202017. Nottingham Planning Board will be holding virtual meetings. Access to these meetings is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access contemporaneously to listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. So let's just make sure everybody's audio is working. Let me just go around, around the corners here and introduce yourselves. Ed?
Present.
Tyler Eaton.
Here.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Barry Anderson.
I am here.
Ian Gast.
Here.
Joe Clough.
Present.
And Sue Moni. Sue Moni, you still with us?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here. I think the bird interrupted you.
Yeah, they're not trained so well. At least they're not parrots. So our agenda tonight is just internal stuff, which is good. We just need this time to be able to really focus and look at some of the items that we want to have for zoning amendments coming up and you know, whatever priorities we have. And I know Steph has a, has put together a list and provided a whole bunch of material. We have some previous drafted amendments, that being the stream protection and the lot disturbance and steep slopes. So should we go through? I guess let me ask Steph, are you organized enough? I mean, more than me, let me put it that way, to kind of lay these out for us?
Yeah, I could definitely do that.
All right, that would be fantastic.
I did just want to touch on some of the goals that I lined up for this meeting. The first one being, I would like to, you know, go through the high priority items and kind of solidify which ones we definitely want to tackle. I think the ones that we have right now are good and I think, you know, are doable. One more that I wanted to mention was Ian brought up some of the wetland buffer and conservation area stuff, which I will let him go over because I think he did a really good job of articulating some of the issues and some examples that he found. But beyond that, we need to set a date if we want to have the Conservation Commission and zoning board and anyone else join our joint meeting to kind of go over and make sure everybody's on the same page. As well as, you know, review the drafted amendments and make sure that everything in there is how we want it to be. And if it's not, I'm happy to tackle some updates. You know, you guys just lay out what you want me to do and I'll do it. The first important date that we need to keep in mind is November 11th. And that is pretty much our deadline for having everything drafted out that we can, or you guys can vote and send it to a hearing. So high level, those are the goals and the important deadline that we have. Jumping into the proposed, or does anybody have any questions on anything that I just went over?
That I do.
Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, November, is that the deadline to send to legal or that deadline to start posting for hearings?
That is the deadline to post for a hearing. So that, that meeting on November 11th is the meeting that you guys have, is the deadline you guys have to vote and send the amendments to a hearing. If we can't send it to legal before, that is definitely preferable.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, before you go on, Steph, we just had another person join. I think it might be Buzz. Is that you Buzz?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so moving on to the proposed zoning changes, I don't know if everybody has the outline in front of them. I'll kind of go through it quickly. The housekeeping issues, those were pretty much all Scrivener's errors. So those are things that we can take care of administratively. They don't need to go to the ballot. Because it's just pretty much all typos, which is okay for us to just fix, you know, on the backend. But of course, you know, if anybody has any housekeeping stuff, pages are mislabeled or, you know, there's two number twos in an article or anything like that, make sure you send it to me because I have this ongoing list that I have. So we don't, that's not really even anything that we need to worry about, that number one housekeeping issue. Number two, the building height. Dale did get back to me with some suggestions. They're at the back of the outline under Dale's suggestions. And then the flood hazard area stuff, I'm still waiting to, from FEMA to get those map updates. I don't believe there's going to be anything. There was a, there was a letter that came in to the planning office that is kind of like, this is the process we're going to go through. I didn't see anything major that's going to change anything, but I have it on my to-do list to follow up with our rep and just make sure everything is good. The fencing provision, Dale also had another suggestion on that, pretty much to comply with whatever the state says. And I believe that's on the property line is the suggested, suggested fence provision. And then we get into the drafted amendments that are already in existence. So the steep slopes, the minimum disturbance amendment, and then the stream buffer ordinance. And that's everything on the high priority list. I'm open to suggestions on any of that stuff. I'll kind of just open it up to the board to start discussing, you know, thoughts on that.
So maybe before we get into just talking about the high priority stuff, let's, can we just finish up with this list? I know it's long, but let's, let's just go through them in case someone thinks that there should be a high priority or priority change on some of it.
Yeah, definitely. So under medium priority, so these were, you know, they're important, but maybe not for this year. Or we don't have enough information on them right now, is the ADU amendments. I think that was really more of a, what is, what are other towns doing and do we like what Nottingham is doing right now? Number nine, separating conforming and non-conforming lot regulations. I think we kind of touched on that and we, we did the the table last year, but there's definitely more that can be looked into for that. And then the low priority, clarify major versus minor home occupation. I know that's come up a couple of times, but and just, just questions on the backend that I've gotten from applicants, you know, what triggers major versus minor? And then we did have that one case, that growing with grace daycare case that came through to the board. But that was kind of a one-off, unique situation. And the number 11 is Article 2, Section D, 2, requirements for the maximum lot coverage. Most towns have 30%. We have 40%. Again, something else that the board should discuss at some point. They want to change that. Dunkyards are number 12. Impact fees, number 13. From what I understand, in order to change impact fees, there's a equation that needs to happen. And the one person that was doing the equation calculations is no longer doing them. So I would definitely have to look into that a lot in order to come up with a process for you guys to, to look into that more. And then number 14 is new provisions. It lists out Airbnb regulations. I had sent out an email listing a bunch, or this was from OSI, the email came from that I forwarded to you guys, just about other, other towns that had had Airbnb or short-term rental regulations. And then we have the adult entertainment, marijuana growing, dispensaries and bookstores. I don't, from my experience, I haven't encountered anything like that yet. But if that's something that's happened in the past, again, a discussion that should probably happen. Accessory structures allowed on lots without primary structures. We did have one of those come before the board. And I know that has been a hot topic in other surrounding towns, so could probably talk about that at some point in the future. Additional driveway setbacks and tiny homes. Tiny homes went, the discussion went to committee at the state level and I'm not really sure what happened after that. I know there was a report that came out, but I don't think there was any sort of law that came into effect after that. Under that, we have Dale's suggestions and then the the amendments that passed at the 2020 town meeting. The last year's amendments.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. Let's go back up to the top of this and let me see what we have in here. Is there? So maybe before we do that, should we talk a little bit about the wetlands? Because I have a feeling that should be in a high priority and we haven't listed it yet. Ian, can you maybe just walk us through a summary of what you put together? That was, that was good.
Sure. So I sent the email that Steph forwarded to everybody, kind of building off of the conversation that we all had with the language that's in two different sections of the zoning ordinance. So the first is really what we were talking about at the two meetings ago, when it first came up, is was it Article 3, Section B? And under permitted uses, that's, that's the wetland conservation areas section. Under permitted uses, the language says, uses that do not result in erection of any structure or alter the surface configuration of the land by the addition of fill or by dredging such as, and then it goes into permitted uses. So I think it was Ed first brought that up, that if you read that by the line, then as it's written, that any filling and dredging would require a variance under the zoning ordinance. One of the other things I pointed out was that although I agree that under the language, it does require a variance, if you go to Section M under general provisions, which is Article 4. So Article 4, Section M is fill and dredge in wetlands. And it's a, it's a one sentence. It says, conditions to fill or dredge in wetlands of Nottingham require application in accordance with NH RSA Chapter 482, so standard wetland impact procedure through the state. So it's a little bit, they kind of fight each other a little bit in the way it's written. It's almost as if, you know, the wetland conservation areas to make some sort of reference to it. I think maybe the, I'd say the highest priority item under the wetlands would just be trying to create that, get that clarification between the two sections. So as a board, we can discuss if we want to keep it as needing a variance or allowing state permitting.
That's kind of
Are you reading that as, are you reading that as either, an either/or or are you reading it as an and?
Which, which part? Between the two sections?
Right, the New Hampshire regulations and our regulations.
Right, so if you read, you know, ultimately the document is our regulations. The first section that we come across is Article 2, Section B, or Article 3, Section B that reads that, that we don't allow any alter, alteration of surface configuration of the land. But also within our zoning ordinance, we have general provisions that cover any number of topics. And we say that basically we can't, you can, it just requires proper application. The, the Section M is a very very, you know, a very, a quick sentence just saying you need an application. It doesn't use any keywords.
So let me
It says that you need a state application.
Yes, you still will.
Yes, because you always need, you always need a state application to impact wetlands.
An and is not an either/or. It's an and.
It's an and.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, in, in either case, you always need the application from the state. It's just a matter of if the town, if the regulation reads that the town does not allow it, then it's automatically triggering a variance, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential application.
So I can chime in here and that I've got a little bit of background from the attorney when we, the town's attorney, when we did post this question to, to him. And I mean, they, they responded quite clearly that, you know, we have in, in our regulations in that Article 4, Article 3, B4, that we prohibit dredging and filling in the wetlands conservation area. And that's, that's what it says. And just based on that plain reading, then they will have to, if, if somebody is going to do that, they need to obtain a, a variance from the zoning board of adjustments. Now, what also in the ties in, we got some input on that Section M is that even if a variance is provided, they still are required to get a permit from DES.
Correct.
And, and we had some discussions in the past about, you know, whether Nottingham can have higher thresholds or higher restrictions on wetlands than the state. And the, the answer came back is, is yes. I mean, we can. You know, it's, it's up to us to have something higher than, and even if it went to a court situation where someone challenged the town, courts would generally rely on the fact that we are protecting wetlands. So the ultimate here is just protecting the wetlands here. And our community wanted to do it a higher threshold than the state. So unless we change this language, all applications for wetlands impacts will require a zoning variance. Alternatively, if we change this language and make it such that it could be a waiver condition for the planning board, then that might align better with, you know, the the intent, because the zoning board is going to take every, you know, it's, each one is an individual application standing on their own merits. And, you know, they have to provide hardship and if they don't, and they don't get a variance, then they absolutely cannot do any wetland filling. So, you know, that's a restriction, you know, well above and beyond what the, the state has.
Right, and that's, to add on to that, I consulted, I asked the wetland scientists in our office just about some of the wetland process, the permitting process and how the state views that. It gets tricky because technically, he says, the way that a lot of the reviewers at the state review an, a wetland application is that if they grant you a permit for that wetland application, in the state's eyes, no wetland exists within that boundaries. That's outside of if you're building any sort of covert that might maintain a natural bottom. But in the state's eyes, you're kind of giving up the, you're, they're giving up the control over controlling that earth. So just a little bit, that might get tricky, but um, I guess where this falls in the zoning ordinance, I didn't know. I don't know if I mentioned it in the email, and I don't know off the top of my head if you have any in here, but I know sometimes in the zoning ordinance, they'll include a special exception. Which zoning board, it's essentially a waiver process through the zoning board. And I believe through the zone, through special exceptions, if we have the ability to do so, that you do not have to prove the same hardship as a variance. At least in the experience that I have on some boards. But I'm not sure if the ordinance has to be set up in a way to allow special exceptions or not. Steph, do you know? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So there's two options. There's the special exception, which is an application that an applicant will fill out and it goes to the ZVA. And then there's conditional use, which is usually tacked on, it's this, it's a, like, sometimes an appendices to a subdivision or a site plan, and that goes to the planning board. So in, you know, in my opinion, I think it's easier for an applicant to do a conditional use application, because then it's, you know, when you're noticing the, the project, you're noticing that conditional use with it. Whereas you would have to notice separately, it would be a separate hearing for a ZVA meeting. The, the examples that you sent over, Conway does special exception, whereas Stratum does conditional use.
Right, okay.
So both are good options. You have the ability to line up criteria and have the applicant fill out, you know, this is why we're doing it. This is, you know, these are the special parameters we're going to put on our project. We're going to, you know, do the project this way to save, you know, this part of the wetland. It just depends on what process you want to go through, the ZVA or the planning board.
Right, okay. So like, I, I, yeah, in that case, then I guess, I think Dirk would agree. I'd probably support the conditional use if we decide to go that route. Just so, it seems like our board's probably going to be the one that has the most feedback on that, us and the Conservation Commission. So maybe keeping it in the planning board, it definitely will streamline things schedule-wise for an applicant and allows us to review everything together. So I guess that's, I definitely probably support that if the board agrees that maybe we should. I mean, I think there needs to be some clarification to go along with this confusion. But I'd be curious what others thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. You know, Nottingham has, you know, a lot of wetlands and the wetland, jurisdictional wetlands aren't always kind of prime wetlands or valuable. So there is some differences between wetlands even that, in that. So dredging, filling in wetland conservation areas may not give the whole picture. And I think the whole picture is understood maybe by the planning board, but the zoning board may not understand it in context with, say, a large subdivision. You know, whether or not the applicant has minimized to the maximum extent possible of, you know, wetland impacts or you know, all the other various things that come with understanding of subdivision. But yes, if, if anyone else has some opinions, I would like to hear those.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree as well. I, I think in a sense, I'll say it just a little differently than you did, but I think because the planning board is really reviewing this application and everything that goes with it, a lot can get lost by sending that to zoning. And, and yeah, I think zoning, as you said, probably would not fully understand the scope of what's going into it. And it really, I just feel it needs to stay with the planning board as much as possible.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Beal, so a couple of things on here. I think as we continue to see development in town, you know, we're going to start getting into the subprime areas. You know, you see that in most towns where prime, easy development stuff develops first, and then you start getting into the, the medium and moderately developable and, and then the subprime type of areas. You're going to run into these type of things more often. That said, I think we're, we're kind of probably late to the game with really protecting our wetlands or other areas. We don't have a true buffer. We mentioned buffers a few times, but we don't have a buffer. We have setbacks. So we don't really protect the wetland areas in that sense. We mentioned prime welllands, but we haven't gone through the process of designating any wetlands prime. We have critical. But we haven't gone through the prime designation process. And so, so all that said, you know, times like this, droughts, you know, heavy rains are times where we're kind of relying on our wetlands to either capture that extra water or to provide some for the aquifers that we have and our wells. And I'd be curious to see what other towns have done and how restrictive they are or not restrictive. Open to creating like a special exception process or a conditional area that we don't have now to, to, to free up some of these without needlessly kicking more into zoning. And the last part of that is, you know, another area, we, we have given ourselves a lot of purview to reduce lot sizes, reduce the number of lots to avoid disturbing critical areas and such. We haven't really done that to date. We just, we've to date, kind of, as long as they've got the upland soils, allowed it, as long as they can get the permits and such, this kind of gives back some of that local control. And makes the purview ours versus just the state's.
So perhaps there is a, a way that either we have some better protection in, in a way of buffers, and maybe that's more important than prohibiting dredging and filling and having a special permit for it. That's another way we, I mean, we can eliminate this and replace it with something that is more protective or respective of those wetlands.
I might chime in. So one of the things, I didn't get to that part of the email yet, but um, kind of like what I'd said. So part of my email did include some stuff related to buffers. So I definitely think that's something to look into. And I included some examples from Conway and Stratum. And I guess one thing with the conditional uses, you can place, you know, we can, we can review what some of the other towns have used and we can have multiple conditional uses and maybe try and build in that buffer language. Because I mean, I got thinking about the, the buffers particularly because I think it was one of the first applications we saw when I was here. I mean, people were putting driveways within like five feet of a wetland, which in reality, how do you stay out of the wetland when you're building base gravels and driveways? So that's where the buffers will come in and kind of help us control where, how development gets laid out. I guess we could just have to keep reviewing the conditional use and how that gets laid out. I think it just gets laid out similar to permitted uses, and then we just have that process. But I think we can wrap a lot of this into a conditional use section in this ordinance.
But it sounds like we need to rewrite the ordinance.
Steph, with that, would a conditional use just be added as a subsection similar to permitted uses?
We could do it that way. We definitely have to, you know, look and make sure it all is consistent. But yeah, a conditional use permit would really just outline, you know, you can do this, you know, barring these conditions. So it would just outline that. Yeah. Um, so it would just outline that and yeah, we could make it a subsection. And what I, sorry, go ahead Dirk.
I was gonna say, we, we definitely would need to change the zoning amendment, I mean, the zoning ordinance. Cause right now it just says dredge and fill is prohibited.
So I see some changes to the language and the addition of another, another subsection under the wetland conservation areas for the conditional use. So it would be some modifications and additions.
Yeah.
All I, all I'm suggesting is that uh, it's getting late in the year. If we're going to do this, and this is our priority, we're not going to have a lot of room to do anything else.
Well, I guess, in terms of finding the time to do it, um, luckily, I mean, I, like I said, I've used Stratum. Uh, I know Stratum has a very well-developed regulation and I thought that they had a very well-developed, and I'm reviewing again, Steph, like you said, they have a conditional use and it uses just references to some RSAs. Um, and some very, it's not specific to Stratum. And I'm kind of scanning through the language and it all seems like it'd be very applicable to giving us the purview where somebody basically has to come in and prove why they want to impact that wetland. Um, but it doesn't, you know, it's not a yes or no via the ordinance.
I, I'd like to hear from Sue, um, what your kind of take is on, on all this, being the Conservation Commission liaison.
Well, a little bit of history, uh, back in 2001, there was an extensive um, list of conservation issues that went on to the public at town meeting. And there were buffers, there were setbacks for wetlands and for rivers and, and um, it went on and on and on and they were all voted down. I think it was just overwhelming for the public and what they didn't have time to read or understand, they just voted no. So when the Conservation Commission decided to tackle this topic again, protecting wetlands, we decided to keep it simple and just go um, the stream protection ordinance first because we have a designated river that comes through town and take it step by step. But I, I like this approach with just um, embedding um, a conditional use um, um subset into our zoning ordinance and then also include a buffer. So it gets embedded in a, in an ordinance we already have in addition to the stream protection. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the streams um, buffer would be a separate um, um, document and presentation as a standalone, but putting in conditional use and buffers for wetlands into documents that we already have, I think that would be great. And that way we're not overwhelming the public with, we've got this new thing and we've got this other new thing and then we also want to do this, they're just going to go, no, forget it. And that Nottingham has done that before. So I think it's packaging.
Yeah, I would agree. I haven't heard anything from Leanne or Joe, or um, do you guys have any comments about this?
Uh, this is Joe. I, I mean, I do like the idea of having some sort of local, for lack of a better word, flavor for it. Because you never know, the way the state manages, things could change and this would at least have something in place for the town to maintain some level of control of its own.
Yeah, I'm also in agreement with what Sue is saying and Ian.
Okay, well, I think that that's a priority that we're, we're going to need to work on. Um, should we say that's kind of on the top of the list and, and then look at the other ones right now? In context?
You know, I was gonna, I was gonna make this. Go ahead, Buzz.
I just was gonna ask, who's going to be in charge of uh, moving forward of this? Cause if we wait for another meeting, we're going to be that much closer to our deadline.
So I think uh, Steph and Ian have volunteered.
Yeah, I figured Steph, I know you, you probably keep the raw document for the zoning and, I mean, I'm just looking at the, to get things started, the overall layout of how Stratum broke out their conditional use, some of the language needs to be modified because they talk about um, they just use some terms that we might not want to, but I mean, 90% of it looks like we could kind of just grab and start from there.
Yeah, I mean, I can do what I did last year and, you know, just kind of do and a draft up like everything but the kitchen sink. And then we can go over it at the next meeting and you can say, yeah, we like this, no, that doesn't like, no, yes, no, yes, no. Um, I can, I can just try to draft something up, um, looking at a couple of different examples here. I think Adam and is great, I'll try to pull in a couple of other ones that are, you know, similar to Nottingham.
And then would, would you just, you think that because the wetland conservation area section is so short, you would just include maybe a, a recommended change in the language under permitted uses so that we kind of get rid of that conflict?
Yeah, I'll um, I'll do track changes and, and, and make some, just like whatever I think would make it fit and then you guys can say yes or do it again, Steph, or try that, or whatever works.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, well, yeah, that's good. I mean, we have, really, it's like three meetings before we have to have, you know, final language. Right?
Yeah.
So if, if uh, Ian and Steph, if you can get some of that language for our next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda and, you know, try and get closer.
Yeah, as long as it's procedure stuff, if you want to bounce that over to me beforehand, I'm happy to review it and um, I guess we'll, we'll have to think about how we want to build in the buffer component. If that goes under conditional use or if it needs to just find a way into this section.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, what, it, I mean, there's a lot of variable buffers out there. And, you know, what are our current setbacks? Are those just going to be transformed into buffers?
So, I think, what was it? So, I think I put this in the email, so I, all that I'm aware of is we have the 75-foot septic setback and then we have the 50 or 75, depending on soil for structures. Um, that's all I could find in regards to any sort of required setback from the wetland. So, I mean, some towns I see they do 175, 50 or 75 is the septic, the structure setback and 50 is the buffer, but I also have seen 25 as a pretty common wetland buffer. And basically, just saying that anything within 25 feet would need some sort of approval and that means the removal of any trees, any grading, um, not allowing stormwater features within 25 feet. Um, I don't know if there's any examples online, but there's, I, I've come across a ton of where you can have, you know, easily have a handful of limitations on a wetland buffer. Um, with our current setbacks, I feel like 25 feet probably makes, fits into our regulation as it stands.
Ian, I have to agree with that. The studies um, I've read say that 25 feet um, removes most impurities and is um, an excellent way to protect a wetland. A no disturb vegetative butter, but uh, buffer.
Right, yep, I agree. Yep, vegetative buffers are probably the best removal rates for most pollutants.
Yes.
Is, is anyone opposed to 25 feet or, or can we move forward on that?
Just a question on, really, are we talking about stormwater structures mainly? Um, or all, other, other things as well, and that, that's my only question.
So the, the, yeah, so the 25-foot wetland buffer would essentially say that, I guess if we stuck this under the conditional uses, any develop, like if a contractor wanted to build a pond and they said they needed to be, the limit of their grading for that pond to be 10 feet from the wetland, that would require a conditional use because generally under 25-foot wetland buffers, it's seen as a no disturb buffer and most, that's sometimes how, under the definitions. Um, so that's another thing, maybe we need to add a definition of buffer if we don't have one that applies. But generally they would see this wetland buffer as a no disturb buffer all the way on.
There's really two things we're trying to accomplish. We'd be either doing a special exception or conditional use language for the wetland itself and then also adding in buffer language for very poorly and poorly drained soils or wetlands. So the OSI did have a chart, it's from 2010 of uh, it was like a um, summary of all towns in the state as to what they have for buffers and setbacks. So it's kind of outdated and, and at that time, some of the towns around us were going more stringent and less stringent. Um, others were in line with where we are at. But I don't know if that's been updated, I couldn't find an updated version since 2010.
Maybe that's one, Steph, maybe if you know of any surrounding towns that have an actual wetland buffer. I don't know what.
I'd have to look into that.
I think that's what we ought to do now. I think we ought to let Steph and Ian look into this and come back with some kind of a report for our next meeting.
I agree.
Steph, the date, the, I'm sorry.
I, I have a data sheet that came from D E S and also um, uh, Great Bay and lists over 50 towns in the Great Bay watershed and protections they have for um, different stream uh, classifications and also for lakes and ponds. And I would say maybe 40% have 100-foot um, buffers for lakes and ponds. Nothing for wetlands though, meaning swamps and fens and things like that. But um, there must be something out there from 2000, from 2018.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely come across 25 or 50-foot welland buffers seems to be one or the other generally. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to work with Steph offline so we can kind of run through it and try and come up with something by the next meeting that we have more input on.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, Steph, the date you had, the date you had given for the final draft language was, was November 11th?
Yes.
Okay, I was looking at that uh, SB 2 zoning amendment calendar, I'm trying to, it's not, it's not listed on there, but it doesn't say. I'm trying to figure out where that is.
Yeah, we um, well, that, that's the last meeting date that we have that kind of fits into that, that calendar.
Got it, I understand now that.
Yeah.
So if we want to do a, uh, this up to the board, if we wanted to do a joint meeting, again, we usually do that every year or so with the zoning board and CONCOM. We probably have one date in between there that we could do, we could always do it after, which isn't the greatest, but is possible.
I would suggest um, sooner rather than later to try and set that date just in case, you know, they bring something up that hasn't already been brought up.
I just don't know what we have on our agenda for October, it'd probably be what we're looking at. So the first and second meeting of October.
So October 14th or 28th?
But without Joanna here.
Are we, are we 23rd? Does anybody know if we have something on the agenda for the 23rd?
We've continued some cases to the 23rd.
Okay.
Whether, whether they're heard or not, we don't know.
Well, let's shoot for the 14th then.
Yeah.
And then I'm, I will check with the Conservation Commission and have them put that, put that date on their calendar for coming in and, and talking about all things conservation, including the um, proposed stream protection ordinance.
Okay, so let's, let's jump into the other priority stuff here um, that we have in the past listed as a high priority. So um, we talked about the housekeeping, Article 2, Section C, the building height. Um, this one doesn't seem to be contentious or, I mean, this one seems to be pretty straightforward. Unless, um, unless somebody thinks otherwise.
Yep. I just would like to, to mention, you know, usually the, the building height um, has a lot to do with what our firefighting abilities are too. So possibly the fire chief may be able to weigh in on that. Um, and uh, and I know, I'm pretty sure that our zoning administrator is uh, also has background in that. So I would think he would have some of that information.
Well, I, I thought we currently do have the height, it's, it's relative to the explanation or definition. So we, I think we say grade.
Relative to grade.
Yeah, so it says grade and the concern is using grade planes instead of grade, which means something different apparently.
It seems like we can, we could fix this one by, I think the problem is that we just don't have a definition currently of grade. So we, we set, we set the building height at 34 feet uh, to grade, but we don't, that's define what grade is, so I think we could just add a definition of grade and, and then um, I'd be open to just going with what the building inspector recommends, you know, for the definition of that, if it's that Newcastle definition that he, he provided.
He suggested um, average grade rather than lowest point.
Okay, I would like to suggest too, maybe, I, I mean, I'd be willing to run it by our fire chief to get an input on that too.
Yep. Steph, did you say that he, the zoning officer suggested the average grade, is that what you said?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Except, except we don't have a definition of average grade.
Right.
Yeah. I think I had to read this Newcastle definition three times to figure out if it's moving away or moving closer to the grade or six feet and.
Yeah, maybe this, maybe there's a simpler definition that we can research.
I like the first sentence in the definition, that gets a little confusing.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't like average grade very much. I think uh, the fire chief's not going to like it either. I think that uh, in Nottingham, we have a lot of uh, houses built on slopes and they're, they're going, they're going to want to limit the uh, height of the building to the highest part compared to the ground.
Uh, yeah, I think he's, he's probably going to mention something to the effect of the highest part, part from the, the farthest reach or something to that effect.
Exactly.
Right, because if, because if it's a slope, if it's a slope and it's built in, so the, the taller side's in the front where the driveway comes in, well, that's a side that the fire department's going to have access to. They're not going to have access easily to the back necessarily. So yeah, I can, yeah, Gary, I appreciate if you, if you're getting his input and we'll get the, a little more information from the building inspector, hopefully can make something work.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm sure the fire chief's aware of, you know, NFPA uh, regulations and maybe there's a good definition in there that we can pick out and NFPA is the National Fire Code.
And I feel like from the previous building inspector, that when we brought this up, it was that it didn't really matter if we defined it because it, it's coming from code. So it's, you know, they're using, if we don't define it, then it's going to So it's, you know, they're using, if we don't define it, then it's going to go booking the code book, but I think it'd be better and clearer for everybody if we just have it defined.
Yep. Okay, so Gary, you'll, you'll help out with that one.
Yep.
But let's move on to the special flood hazard area. And this one is really just updating the maps, right? I don't know, just depending. So do we need any zoning change for this?
Um, I will, I will, you know, follow up with our rep at the FEMA office. And just make sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing if anything were to change. And I can have that answer by the next meeting.
Okay, that would be great, Steph, thanks. So let's talk about fencing. You know, suggested of a one foot setback or on the property line with your butter's permission. Allow up to a six foot fence. State recommendations. I guess, I'm not sure what the state recommendations are. Does anybody know what the state recommended revisions are?
I always thought it was a foot off the, the property line, but like, no, I don't know necessarily.
The state recommendation is under Dale's suggestion. It says, it, it's just a recommendation from them and it says can go to property line, but recommendation is one foot back.
Okay.
How about height? Does the state recommend height?
That I do not know.
The only thing I could think of on that is that, you know, if you get pushed back of someone that's property is close to a, a road, then, then they have their gardens there, you know, and they want to do an eight foot fence for deer.
Right.
You know. It, but that's, that's, I'm just trying to think outside the boxes to, you know, where people would want a taller fence without it being a spite fence.
That's what I was just going to ask is if there's, what provision will we have to actually allow eight foot? I don't know if it's a waiver.
Yeah, I would think that a waiver would make sense for a special situation like that.
Or if somebody has a elk farm or something with uh, jumping livestock.
Yeah, definitely need that eight foot.
I, I think the townspeople are not going to be in favor of you, of us giving uh, limits on what they can do with their fencing. So I think we ought to go with the state regulation.
However, I think six feet is a, a standard height for a map one.
We don't want to put regulations in there that are going to get the townspeople upset and make them vote everything down that we put in.
Yeah, right, good point. So if we can put alongside it, you know, or something like in parentheses. You know, um, aligning with state regulations. It may look a lot better. Be more acceptable.
Yeah.
I'd probably recommend that we push this one for now, if, if we're going to go forward with some of the, some of the others.
Yeah, exactly.
The ballot.
Okay.
We only, we only have four weeks, four meetings left to get this done.
The only definition I've found on legal fences under the state of New Hampshire statutes is they use the term all fences of such height as to be reasonably adequate for their purpose. So.
It sounds like great.
So I don't know if they put a restriction on the height, maybe the location, I'm not sure. If anything, I wonder if it's just a recommendation. But we can look at that.
All right, let's, let's make, let's move this, this one can go down to the
Next year.
Medium priority.
Along with the tiny houses.
Yeah. Okay, so then we're into steep slope ordinance. And I, I'm not sure the appetite on this. I know, again, this is protecting some of the marginal land that is out there for development. You know, we do have it written up, but it was, it was voted down previously.
By the planning board.
Yeah, I think it was tabled.
Never got, it never got to the town.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
You know, on this, I know previously when I looked at other towns around us, you know, so we're, we, we do have some steep slope protections. It's 25% or greater, but it's, it's still um in a way kind of weak from, from that standpoint. And we've uh, you know, other, other towns I think are more at the 15% range now for steep slopes, 15% and above. Is seeing that as being, basically it's another sensitive area that tends to experience a more environmental degradation when it's disturbed than, you know, a corresponding area that's not sloped.
So in practice, I guess if we, if we had anything at those limits that, I mean, between the 15 and the 25 that we've seen have been concerning.
I know we've had a number of applications in the last couple of years that were definitely in that, in those areas.
Yeah.
Thinking Route 4, you know, that one was pretty steep.
Yeah, it looks steeper, it looks steeper than what we, what the plans had.
Yeah.
Uh, my only thought overall on this is, I guess I'm just scanning the way it's written now. Is it basically saying that any area of 15% slope basically can't be used for lot area? I didn't know if you needed to hit a contiguous, a minimum area. Just because I know from my experiences, if a lot of these engineers are going to use their computer drawings to generate this, they might get a lot of little pockets of 15%. You might get, maybe it's an error in your survey, the topography. But you might get like an area that shows up as 15% and it's just because there's some boulders or depending on how the service, but I didn't know if we should have a threshold of square footage that, does a 50 square foot area count as 15% if it's a possible error in the software? I've seen that the town of Acton has something, in Maine has something like that. It kind of builds in room for error.
I would also think that along with the slopes would come maximum cuts. Or minimum cuts, however we look at it.
So in, in the proposed ordinance, that was, as it was written for us, was um, were definitions too. So it mentions the 15% or greater measuring two foot contours over 10 foot and vertical intervals. So I don't know if that alleviates that concern that Mr. McKinnon had. Or not.
Yeah.
So that, I guess that would essentially would be up to whoever's preparing the plan to, yeah, if they, they, they believe an error was generally, or boundary was generating an error from their software, they could prove it by doing raw. The raw calculation based off the 10 foot. So I think that would allow people to discount small area of like 20 square feet or something. I guess that's good enough for my question then.
Okay, so I guess the, the question we have for the board is, does steep slope go into the zoning amendments for this next year?
My opinion is that we're biting off more than we can chew. We spent a year building that uh, zoning law and the board wouldn't even approve it. So I suspect that without us spending a lot of time on it and refining it very carefully, that the town is not going to go for it either. They're going to, people are not going to want to have more restrictions on their personal property.
Anybody else have some feeling on this?
I do think Buzz is right about that, just as a general statement.
I, I agree. I think this, this one does need more work.
I agree, we need it in town.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
But we ought to start on it at the start of the year, not at the end of the year.
Yeah, I agree with that. We need to work on it, but it's not, we don't have time to do this now.
Right.
Yep, yes. What, what happened?
And if I remember the vote that the board took to not put it before the voters, it was a four to three vote. Four nays and three yeses. So it was, it was close. It needs to be worked, worked on a bit more.
Yeah, I think it's.
And I wasn't, I, I wasn't seated that night.
Oh.
Can I ask, um, what exactly are you guys looking at that needs work? What, what doesn't sit well with the board?
We'd almost have to revisit it because it's been a while. I mean, we'd have to reread it and I think that's the time factor that we probably don't have.
Yeah, it's been two years anyway.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, my only comment on that or some of these others that we have is, you know, we had some that were basically, we have basically drafted already. So I'm fine with tabling this one till, till next year. You know, but these are the ones that we already had kind of written, so these should be the easiest for us. You know, now we're bringing in new stuff that definitely will need a lot of work. So I guess, you know, it's good that we have someone helping us now with the timelines to to keep us on, on track with these because we, we get busy with the applications and such and these, these other high priority items kind of, sometimes we push and um, I think it's important that we have a plan for the future is to make sure we don't, don't lose sight of these.
Okay, so the consensus seems we'll push this, uh, steep slopes. And minimum disturbance amendments, stream buffer ordinance. How are we feeling about these two? Same? They just need some work or they're ready to go and we just need to crush them off?
What, my opinion is on the stream buffer that we, last year this was, you know, done by another board for us. We kind of delegated it down. And we didn't really give it any attention because we had, we wanted to do like the big overhaul of the zoning ordinance and not, and not add anything really new at that time. So I think it'd be kind of a disservice to, to not at least go through it this year and to, and make a, a kind of a, a higher level decision on it.
Okay.
And it goes with the wetlands.
Yep, yep, true.
And it was done in 2018. And we spent quite a bit of time on the Conservation Commission doing research and, and pulling it together. And we think we have a document that's um, digestible and attractive and not too overwhelming for the public.
Good.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's dust that one off. Um, you know, let's, let's just have it as homework for everyone. And when we talk next meeting, we'll just set aside a little bit of time. You know, talk about what Ian has come up with, Ian and Steph on the wetlands. And then um, we'll reacquaint ourselves until, before then with the uh, stream buffer. And then we can talk a little bit more in detail.
Yeah, that would be great. Yep, thank you.
And what about minimum disturbance? Is that going to, is that another, it's going to be too much? Kind of like the theming of, you know, the wet, as Buzz said, the wetlands and stream buffer.
It all seems, seems like that could almost be worked on with the uh, steep slopes.
So is one of my takeaways from that prior meeting, I indicated I would go through the, if we're talking about the, the lot disturbance landscaping ordinance that was proposed. Or are you just talking about?
Yeah, I'm just, I think we're talking about just whatever the minimum disturbed amendment.
Okay.
We, we have that drafted from Bruce Mayberry, which now would have been three years ago, probably.
Probably more. So I had, so I thought we incorporated some of this in the zoning ordinance, but we, we incorporated some of it in the subdivision regs. So when, when we read it though, so like disturbance, we pulled kind of into 10.2 and 10.3. Standards for review, we pulled a little bit of that in into the section 14. You know, the grading and erosion plans. You know, where they shall submit plans for areas in 30,000 square feet, environmentally sensitive areas, critical areas. And one thing I noticed, I don't think we've defined critical areas in the zoning ordinance, but we mentioned it. I think it's in the subdivision regs. So I think that's another thing that we've talked about in the past was that our, our definitions.
Need to be expanded.
One, well, in one set of definitions that are copied from zoning into subdivision regs and the site plan. So we're not potentially off, operating off three different sets.
Right. Do you want to compare what, and I'm talking to you Ed, do you want to compare what Bruce had put together and then what we actually changed? And see if there's still a need to have that amendment or if we covered it on some of the zoning regs, we, the changes we made last year?
Yeah, I was just looking at the sub regs and I was trying to find the zoning regs. Yeah, so, so we have critical areas defined in subdivision regs, but we don't have them defined in the zoning.
Yeah, I'd say we definitely probably get that in the zoning if we're going to be building on this wetland section.
So in subdivision regs, in case everybody's not there, critical areas are, in the case this overlaps with uh, the other sections we're talking about. Are disturbed areas of any size within 50 feet of a stream, water body, or poorly or very poorly drained soils. Starb areas exceeding 2,000 square feet in highly erodible soils or disturbed areas containing slope lengths exceeding 25 feet on slopes greater than 15%. So that's the definition of critical area and then throughout the subdivision regs, you know, our mentions of critical areas.
Okay. I don't know where we go with that.
Well, somebody has to review if the definitions all match or not. Who's that going to be?
I guess, I guess my first question is, is um, Steph, I don't know how searchable, I'm guessing all the, like you have probably the raw document, is there a way for us to get find out all the areas, the critical areas is mentioned in the subdivision so we can? It's like, there's like three or four different criteria under critical areas. And I'm sure that, I, I could see that that applies to the Strongmore manager plan, but I'm just curious. How many sections reference critical area?
PDFs should be searchable, but if not, we do have the word file.
Yeah, give me one second. Critical area in subdivision, um, 6.2 inside of you. Um, critical wetlands is in 8.3 specific plan information. Critical area in article 10, general requirements. Into grading and erosion, it's mentioned nine, the word critical coupled with areas. Critical watersheds, areas, critical areas, yes, is mentioned nine times in the subdivision reg.
Wow.
And then there is that, um, critical areas definition at the end.
Well, one thing in benefit of Zoom meetings is I don't miss bedtime for the kiddos. So that was, sorry if I uh. I think they got on screen there for a second. Um, so one thing though, so we, we talk about this section here, that the minimum disturbed area. And then we've also thrown the, the word, the verbiage, verbiage out about uh, I think lot coverage. So. They're not necessarily tied hand in hand. Um, you know, we could reduce or change the, the maximum lot coverage. Easily uh, on the other section without necessarily adding in a new. Uh, ordinance. Because in here, there was a lot of, there, there, in this, there was a lot of discussion. I mean, it was. Contiguous areas of disturbance greater than 10,000 square feet should be separated by at least 20 feet of area maintained in natural grid. So it was, it was adding buffer strips in between. I think that was why some of this got tabled. At the time. Um, and again, we did pull some into the sub regs, which was to, to try to capture it more when it's a new subdivision. Versus impacting. You know, the, the, uh, an everyday homeowner that's already got their lot and is trying to do, you know, like a change or add something on.
I'll definitely say that just above where you read, I do, I like that. That this proposal was limiting. The develop or the declaring basically or disturbance to 30,000 square feet if somebody can't buy a lot and then. Just cut and put a big soccer field in. I don't know. I'm guessing we don't have anything, we didn't adopt anything like that into the subdivision regs.
Uh, I don't think so. I mean, we, when it's part of a subdivision, we've added things in about um. Environmental impact assessments and, and design, and some other design plans that need to be.
Oh, I see. I see here. We do say, okay, we do say, if you hit that threshold, you do have to submit a strong word. Okay.
And I think the carve out of this is someone buying a lot and clear cutting it is a, is that agriculture or forestry is generally.
Simple.
Separate from, from us. But that's it. If someone goes buys a lot, clear cuts it, then comes before us for a subdivision, you know, we could require certain levels of revegetation and, and such. So I think for this one, you know, my initial reaction to it, if, which I think the board, we should consider is. Do we want to add this into zoning at this time or keep it more in the subdivision regs? Where it's really trying to um, address new subdivisions versus uh, you know, current lots.
Right, because that's the only place that. It really isn't covered is the single lots.
I guess it would just want to, I would want to apply to any new application, um, knowing that, I guess, somebody in theory could just pull a building permit for existing lot.
Right, so subdivision and site plan is probably.
I guess we'd have to go that route because. If we started requiring it for single lots, like it's a little restrictive. For existing lot.
Yeah, that would have to be in the zoning, zoning regs.
And you still have to get it by the voters.
Right, which is probably, it may be tough there.
So we do have in-site plan review um, under. Oh yeah, this is why it's in there. We, we basically copied over the um. A lot of our subdivision regulations when we rewrote the site plan. So they, a lot of, they, they match up in a lot of degrees. So under 10.2 grading erosion sediment control plan. Again, the applicant shall submit plans to the board, uh, blah, 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 accumulate disturbed surface area exceeding 30,000 square feet. And it exempts standard agriculture and timber harvesting practices.
So I guess is that covering what we want it to be covering? I mean, do we need to do anything?
It, it seems like we're covering a lot and I know Buzz would agree, uh, proposing this as a new article would be hard as, you know, as a, as an entirely new article. Or section within the article.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. Keep it in the, in the regs and keep it out of the zoning ordinance if we can do that. Because it's with the spirit of things that we have in the zoning ordinance. And the master plan.
Yeah, I mean, some of these things similar to, you know, even in the medium priority and non-conformance lots, some other things. I think that it would be good to. Update some of those through the master planning. And, and get a better. General view of, you know, the, the town and. I guess as part of the master plan. That's just some of my thoughts. Okay, so right now, let's just recap before we would even head into the medium priorities, which we may not have time to do that. So everybody's pretty much accepting that we need to do some housekeeping. That should be pretty straightforward. The, the building height. Um, is going to be maybe just an ad of a definition. Gary, you're going to look into that.
Yeah.
Uh, flood hazard, that may not have anything to do with zoning. So Steph, you're going to just check with the FEMA. Uh, fencing, we are just gonna. Maybe just push that because we don't want to add. Limitations in the ordinance right at this moment. Addition, steep slopes. Dude, we are covered a little bit with that, but that again is going to be more than we want to. Chew. So that really boils down to, you know, the stream buffer and kind of that wetlands. Discussion.
And I think that, I think that's plenty to accomplish this year.
Yeah. I would agree.
Well, the stream ordinance, is that what Sue was saying that maybe that gets pushed if we can get this wetlands through and then maybe. The stream that, that leads some, lays some groundwork for getting the stream ordinance out?
I, I think, I don't want to talk for Sue, but I think it was in combination. So maybe these can be combined.
Not really combined, but they, they go, they tandem, they go together.
Yeah, it may not be the specific same article, but they're in the same, they're, they're in the same family.
Yes.
And, and they can be structured differently for the voters too. The, the stream protection could be a standalone. And the buffers for wetlands could be changed, this section of, of the zoning ordinance to include blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Yep.
So then next year, we need to have a better jump on ADUs. Conforming, not conforming lot regulations. And some of these other clarifications, right? Does that sound?
Attack east slopes again, that's got to be a, a, an upfront priority at the start of the year.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, as far as the priorities go, you, you know, I think these high ones. We're just going to need to re-establish that hierarchy. And I think the draft, steep slopes would need to be on top of that.
ADUs always seems like an easy conversation, but it never is when we bring it up. You know, we're. I think this is, goes in kind of hand in hand with Airbnbs and things like that where uh, some towns regulate that you can have an ADU or. Whatever, but at least one of the units has to be owner occupied. And there's a permit process for it with the town. I know Dover does that. Um, it's basically to avoid creating multifamilies accidentally that are, are rentals. And then we already, we already defined the ADU is requiring an interior door. So I don't know if we need to do the attachment. Um, address the attachment question. But again, if we're, if we're tabling that till next year, that, that's fine. No need to jump into it tonight.
Yeah, and I would add to that, um, our code enforcer is. Pretty up on, oh, just because we built a couple of them that. He's very, he's quite up on some of those details. So. Probably, he could be helpful too.
Yep. Okay, uh, anything else relative to the, the proposed zoning changes? Just want to make sure we get through the rest of this agenda here.
So not necessarily on this list, but just one that I wanted to maybe ask the Mr. Chairman about. So at a recent, a couple of recent select board meetings, they, it was repeated multiple times that Nottingham doesn't have noise ordinances. When residents were complaining about noises from commercial events. And when in fact, we do have, we do regulate noise as a, as a pollution in our site plan and our zoning, um, when it comes to businesses. So do, what a noise ordinance, is that falling under something we would have to take on or is that the select board? Because it's a more like a, a dog ordinance and a, or a leash ordinance or anything like that.
That's a good question.
It's fine. I, I think it's something we should probably have as a discussion at some point. You know, I just don't know if that's, if they're looking to us to do that, or if that's something that, that they're looking to take on. They being the board of selectmen.
Yeah, does Tyler have a comment?
Uh, I, I really don't know. I mean, well, I know we, it's been brought up at our meetings, but I, I don't know if uh, we'd be looking to. Put a noise, noise ornament or not. I mean. I look at it as, I can't do anything about Lee Raceway. They make a lot of noise, but I can't, I don't have any say in that. So. I don't know. I think it's just another thing that may get residents upset. I don't know. You know, I, I believe there should be something.
Residents could have done something about Lee Raceway before it went in, but it's hard to do anything retroactively about Lee Raceway. So. The big difference between moving in next to something that's already in existence versus stuff that gets added on afterwards.
Yeah, right. That's definitely, that, the, the key there is, you know, if there is an ordinance, needs to be implemented when something comes in. Or you, you need it there or, or else.
Yeah, I think that this has a, a higher arching concerns than, than just planning board. You know, I mean, we've been seeing complaints of chickens and complaints of snowmobiles and. So I don't think that's really planning board's purview.
Yeah.
I would say though, that if we do come up with an ordinance, it, it would definitely find its home in the zoning ordinance. Um, that's usually where I see noise ordinances for some towns. But that's definitely a long process of creating.
I, I just, I just want to include with the noises that several neighborhoods, um, people have experienced neighbors that are shooting off their pistols. For target practice in the late afternoon. And, and one person in particular told me that it really frightens their dogs. So.
It frightens me.
Sue, that's a good point too, because I believe there's some state regulations that actually regulate how they're, how close you can be to a neighboring home. But I guess we'd have to look in to see if towns then have the ability to further restrict that.
And it's 300 feet, I believe.
Yes, 300 feet from the nearest structure, adjacent structure that somebody resides in.
But yeah, I know that's a belief for neighbors of, mostly it's, it's veterans that have uh. You know, have been shot during war that it gives them, you know, it really sparks their PTSD, but. That's, that's more, that's a little outside of where I was going. You know, for me, we do have, we do have. Noise regulated in our zoning and our site plans when it goes to a business uh, use and things like that versus. Everyday homeowner agricultural noises because, you know, we're, we're agricultural town. So tractors, normal process, animals also. Generally a, a, a sound you'll hear in an agricultural area. But when it's business related, it's supposed to spark an additional review, in my opinion.
And, and, and just because we don't have a noise ordinance doesn't mean that we, we uh, cannot condition a, of. An approval, uh, site plan approval. If somebody had came in with a, you know, a small concert event or, or not event, but. Concert hall, then the planning board uh, would be within its purview to, you know, limit some of those hours or noises. Specifically to that use.
If the town gained it, our, our, our responsibility, yes. But, but that brings back the question of. You know. Things that we don't get, that, that aren't put before us or sought for our input.
True.
Going a little outside of it. So, but.
Yeah, which seems more recreational is where, where the question comes in.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, the, the point here is November 11th. That's, you know, that's kind of the drop dead date and. The next meeting will have some more inputs. The next planning board meeting will have inputs from. Various members.
So then October 14th is uh, we're looking for a joint meeting with planning board, CONCOM and ZBA.
Yeah.
You want, I can, you want me to email Joanna to see if she can invite the uh, ZBA and make sure it's published as a joint meeting?
Yes, please.
Can she also invite the, the conservation commission as a formality? Rather than me just bringing it up at our next meeting, that would be nice.
And then we'll have confirmation from both boards at our next meeting and we can finalize that, or we'll just put it on the docket now.
Yes.
And I also suggest, um, including Dale code enforcement.
Yep. Thank you. Didn't need to leave him out.
Okay, so should, should we move on to staff and board updates? I'll take that as a yes.
Yeah.
Uh, let me stop sharing my screen so we can see people's names. Uh, so I'll start with Ian, you're top of the chart.
Um, I got nothing new, but I'll work with Steph to work on this wetland stuff. Hopefully something more fun for you guys.
Gary?
Good. Nothing new except that, as I mentioned last time, recycling roundtable on the 17th. So I'll bring the, the board's suggestions about the. Yeah.
You just, what that was? So that I can, sorry, I'm, I'm supposed to be taking notes for Joanna, so I just missed.
Sure. So the, the suggestions that the, that actually Sue had brought up were for a recycling. So, the, the suggestions that the, that actually Sue had brought up were for recycling the roundtable on the 17th, and, yeah, okay, things like paint and stuff, and how to get rid of that.
Yeah, hazardous household waste.
How, right. Hazardous waste. Those words were, were just not coming to me for some reason tonight.
And that was September 17th?
The 7th, 17th, I believe it is.
Tyler, do you have any updates?
Yeah. Select Board, on 8/31, just we, of course, we had the election yesterday. They got the place set up on Thursday, so it went pretty well, and everybody did a great job there yesterday. Also went over the New Hampshire retirement system, rates for pensions for our, for our fire, fire and police are going up quite a bit. There's some unfunded liability, and we'll see significant increases in the next couple of years. The town, they're going through an audit, almost done. The only problem they have right now is checks that have been written and people haven't cashed, or businesses haven't cashed, so they're working on that. We have on our agenda, we're looking to unload the Route 4 property, and also, another piece of property, the corner of Freeman Hall Road and Garland, I believe it is. And then there's another piece of property, nine acres across from where USA Springs is going to be. Looking to get rid of that as well. And then I have a, just a little statement here that came from, again, from the whole water cross and all that, and maybe some of the reasonings of the board, we acted in the way we did. I mean, the Board of Selectmen had the authority under 28, something called one, to license competitive events for pay. That is a license that you issued, that we issued each weekend. We had not applied the statute before, and we will be developing a more structured process for in the future. But, any future water cross events will be subject to the law, and that, again, will be coming in front of the planning board. The Board of Selectmen recognized that, at the time, the applicant, that there wasn't time for the applicant to go through the site plan process with the planning board in time to hold the events, wanted to hold, they wanted to hold this year. From the beginning of the conversation, the Board of Selectmen instructed the water cross applicant to begin the site plan process with the planning board before any events could be held next year. The applicant has, has started the process already. If the water cross does not get the land use approvals it needs, the Board of Selectmen will enforce those regulations next year to prevent any events from happening. The Board of Selectmen made the judgment call entirely, entirely within its authority to delay enforcement and let the event go on this year.
Thanks, Tyler.
And, and I would like to say, I mean, they, 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 they came to our meeting as well, and I don't know if anybody's interested, but if anybody's interested in going to the event before they come to our board, I can get all the free passes that's needed, if anybody wants to see it. That's what, that's what we did on the select one. We went to the first one. It's been an hour or so.
And, and just, you know, in case somebody's waiting, so they have one more event that's going to happen? What, what are the, what's that date?
That's in September, if somebody jumped in a few weeks.
I think it's like the 22nd, 23rd, some, whatever that weekend is around then. 22nd, 23rd, 24th.
Okay. Thanks, Tyler. Appreciate the response back from the select board. Ed, do you have anything? Updates?
I appreciate the select board's response at that. I went back and watched the select board meetings, and I'm not going to let them off the hook. It's very concerning to me as a planning board member and as a citizen that they reacted last minute on all this. Basically, because there was a little bit of time, but that's not anybody in the town's fault. It's not any of the board's fault that there was a little bit of time. And, and reacting in that way and, and without doing the due diligence on a process is concerning to me. There was never comment at all during those processes as to where conditional uses looked at for the, for the property itself, that did it prohibit that? Was there anything else, you know, that process that should have been looked at? Does the current use of the property even allow for events such as this taking place? That's all something that this board would normally, you know, look into and require as, as part of our due diligence on, on an application. And that, and the, a butter notice, the legal butter notice, to make sure butters are aware of it and have a voice. And again, that's to be for, against, or to learn more about a, a, an application. So, I think that the board's decision to operate under the showman licensure is a reach, and I think it was stated right at that meeting by the town admin, that it realistically probably should have been a planning board and a board selectman process, because they're not just licensing showman, they're also licensing camping and fireworks. So, it's, it's more about, a lot more than just the showman side of things. And, and I know I mentioned already about the noise ordinance, but we do have noise regulated in both zoning and site plan when it comes from a business. So, I, I, none of that was discussed, and I, I think, I think, I think there's a lot of room for improvement on this as a whole.
Yeah. Ed, thanks for your, your thoughts there. Mian, do you have any updates?
No, nothing new tonight.
Joe? Any, any updates or scheduling things going on?
I'll call it tentative, but it is likely that next meeting will be my last one. But, there's still a few hurdles to jump through, so I'll keep you posted. But, I will be attending the next meeting at a minimum.
Excellent. Well, we're going to miss you, but just keep on coming.
Thank you.
And, and these, all these planning board meetings are open to the public, so if and when you do move, even if it's in another location, you're welcome to jump on our Zoom call anytime.
I'll pop in. I'll just put, make a digital sign in book, so you guys get my new address.
Oh, good.
Sue, do you have any updates?
Um, just two quick ones. We finished up on river water testing last Friday, and this last one and the one before, it was a little difficult because two of the three areas that we test, the river was not moving. It was more like little puddles here and there. But, the state was very interested in the, in the data that we collected during this time of, of extreme drought. And the second item is, we continue to work on Marsh Woods, which is the Miriam Daggett Tasker Combined Properties that are but the town recycling center on Freeman Hall. And we hope to have at least part of the walking path open for the public within a couple of months. We just need to have a bridge built and put in place over the North River. So, we're casting about for a volunteer or volunteers to assist us with that project. That's it.
Buzz, do you have any updates?
Uh, nope. I said, "Bunny" tonight.
Okay. Let's get back to the agenda. I think we just, excuse me, have a couple of minutes to approve if, if everybody's inclined. We have July 8th and August 26th.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having a couple of issues still with the July 8 minutes. There are two edits that Joanna and I have been going back and forth on that we haven't settled yet. So, I propose that we postpone the acceptance of July 8 minutes, and I have not had a chance to thoroughly go through August 26th. And just at a quick glance, I've spotted two edits that need to be made. So, can we postpone those as well, August 26th? Okay.
Yep, yep. And, and there's some, I, I am, I'd like to ask everybody just to make sure that they do read minutes. You know, it is, it is the document that, what our meeting is, and if there's something that doesn't look right, or wasn't what you expected that, in context, then just make sure you have input to Joanna on that. So, yeah, we can push these two minutes.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And other than that, we can adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I moved up. We adjourn?
Second.
So, motion and second, and I, before we all vote and we all sign off, I want to appreciate everybody, all the members here, and, and especially Steph. You know, these are important zoning ordinances that we really need to be on top of, and I think we are to the best extent possible. But, we can always work a little bit harder. So, appreciate everybody's effort. So, with that, I think we can be adjourned.
Good night.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.